Meeting is open at six o'clock. I'm recording, thank you. Trying to find an email. I gave you the letter. Yes, you gave me the letter, but he sent me, and here we go. Alright, so first thing we got. Um, meeting minutes, I would make a motion to approve meeting minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty four as written. Any discussion? On paper? I think TJ, you might have been absent, yeah.
I was absent once. Okay, I rescind my approval.
Do we have any, anyone here for audience participation, public comment? Here, alright, Highway, come on down, Department reports. How are you?
I'm doing good, yourself?
Not bad?
What are you dog doing?
She's a pain in my butt, ate the face out of a ten dollar bill the other day.
Better than a hundred.
Don't have those lying around.
Lots of things going on. I'll receive the schoolwork that we call bond.
Okay.
For the playground.
Oh, cool.
And for. The other, by the bridge.
Okay, with some pricing by the bridge?
Yeah.
And the playground?
Yeah.
Is it astronomical?
Well. For the playground. They can do. Let's see here. Oh, a lot you guys will get.
This is gonna end up, I'm gonna be a project.
They can do the project for under fifty thousand, it was gonna cost eleven something to design it all.
And that's the playground?
Yes.
Did they say anything about this helping to keep water out of our basin as well?
No. But it wouldn't hurt, that's for sure.
Yeah. Maybe, uh, so design a subdrain system beneath the play surface. Delay to the existing drainage trench which runs alongside the basketball court. Okay. Alright, and what about the bridge?
That one here, they could do the same thing for roughly. Seventy-two, seven. It includes site investigations, preliminary design, permitting, fire design. Then. I asked him if it's possible to do a drainpipe video. The one that's.
Oh.
Right on the corner down here. That goes all the way up to Kalin. Um, they could do that for eighty-one hundred dollars, bidding assistance and construction fee services. So seventy-two, seven hundred.
And that will stop the leak that is causing the ice hilled up under the.
Well, that's gonna redirect everything that's behind the house. And down, but do we own the house?
Cause no, not yet.
So. We'll have to hold off on that part.
So would it make sense to do just part of it and not all of it?
So, um. Study investigation wouldn't be bad, that's for sure. Check it all out, you know, to verify the site.
Would they need access to that land though?
Yes. Yeah.
How legally?
Well, we could, we could sneak over onto that part we already own, where the garage was. And there's a right away through there, right? Good at garage, so it's like, yeah.
Number, what, maybe it's number twenty-two Russell State.
Um, what are you thinking for funding this?
I could use chapter ninety, chapter ninety on it. But it's going to. Dig into. Later projects. But if we get the. If we get the grant for Gore Road. It'll be fine. But we don't, we'll be, we'll have probably two seventy-five left. In the account. And I got a price for, um, lines. For eighteen miles, that was thirty-seven thousand.
On Gore Road?
You know, painting, painting lines.
Where, just all over town?
North Blanford, Chester, North Blanford, Chester. A portion of Beach Hill and South Street.
Have you contacted the DOT about the one that goes under the turnpike? See if they can do some maintenance on that, that drain?
I think that's the same one who's talking about.
Down here, yeah, but DOT owns that part right up to where that drain starts.
Yep.
So I'm pretty sure that you couldn't even. Throw a golf ball through that thing, it's pretty plugged up, cause they haven't maintained it.
So you, we're talking about the same one, right?
Yes, same as part of it, yeah.
I, I know that it flows through.
It does.
Oh, yes. But the problem that. I don't wanna say it's a problem, but it could be. Is the one that, that same spot, right, that catch basin. And that probably eighteen inch cover, but galvanized, it runs from there all the way up. It's probably been there for what, thirty years?
A while.
If not more, I'm having, you know, that, that could be a portion of it, some of the issues.
Could we, do you think we could? Try to get some funding from DOT to help with the project?
Probably not.
It's not, none of it is on their property?
No, you're just. And, and they're, and the pedal is across. And, and it drops over to the. Six pound lane, there is that way.
So when should you hear about Gore Road, um, grant?
November, November, both, both of them should be done by November.
The grants, so what were you thinking of the timeline for this, like, when we?
Oh, I mean, we can.
Because, I mean, ideally, we would start it before winter.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But if we have to wait until November to know about the grant. Then it could be like a next. Spring?
It could be.
It would be nice not to have ice on that road.
That's what I'm thinking, I know, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We won't know about, we'd have to use chapter ninety money for sure.
Yeah, who's it?
Use it, you think?
Roll the disc, I roll the dice rather, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, we gotta keep the water out of that place.
Yeah, I mean, it's a school bus road.
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah, I guess if that's where you think the priority for chapter ninety money.
Yeah, um.
Jackie, has the grant already been applied for?
Yes.
For this, okay. The, the grant that's gonna apply for is for Gore Road.
Gore Road.
He's just saying that he could ship some money.
Right.
Okay.
It's for Gore Road and a grant for Beach Hill Road.
Okay.
Yeah. What I could do is I could talk to the gentleman who was working on this and see if we could do, just do a portion, like a site investigation. And see what he comes up with that. And it's, and we can start the process slowly. Until we actually find out that. Um, it's gonna be more than we thought, or it could be less than we thought.
We would definitely wanna get it done before winter.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
At least get.
Start evaluation, start, see where you're at.
Okay.
It's, it's only a guess at this point.
So you'll have to put that up to bid and everything?
Um, no, no.
No.
Nope.
Okay.
So that's that.
Okay.
Okay. Part one. Now. I got this from DOT, Craig Cashman. Um, they are. This is what they sent to me, "We hope this email finds you well as part of our ongoing commitment to transparency, community engagement. United, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation is hosting a series of public meetings. To gather input on eighteen service classes. Your participation insights are cr- critical in shaping the request for proposals." So in your paperwork, you can write down June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M, there is a Zoom. And I will leave this here for you guys, there's a link to it.
We, um, I saw that in Joy's office, and she was gonna have Wendy put it on her website.
Okay.
So people can.
Yeah, okay, good.
Um, there's three different.
Yeah, it's, um, the one of his Ludlow. Lee Ludlow Blanford, Charlton, Baming Hand, Natick, and Westborough, and next one is Newton, Lexington, and Beverly, Plymouth.
Yeah.
Two different areas.
So it's June thirteenth, what was the time?
Uh, six P M. And that's on.
What's that?
Yeah.
June, yeah.
No, you don't hear.
June thirteenth.
Alright.
Now we've all seen that the roads were rubber tripped. So that's all gone, there was the invoice. And the signature. Three, three, three. Three, four.
This is Beach Hill and?
No, yeah, Beach Hill. Eric, Glasgow, Wyman, Brooks. Yeah.
And you had a conversation with Nicole about Beach Hill Bridge?
Yes.
Did you get the information that you needed?
Um.
Vice versa.
She didn't offer anything.
She told me that they were gonna put it on the budget next year.
Yes, that, yes, that part there, yes, yes. Yeah.
So just to clarify, you know, for minutes, we were, um. Uh, David asked me to reach out, um, to Nicole Sanford from. Um, Springfield Water and Sewer to look for help with the remaining thirty-two thousand for the bridge on Beach Hill. Um, and I had a conversation with her, and she said that she was, um, she was recommending on the budget for Springfield Water and Sewer for next year. This year, they, the budget was done. And we were already getting help with the air packs, some air packs for the fire department, as well as the, the brush truck.
Yeah.
Okay, so am I supposed to be doing something with that?
No, I just, in case you needed it for minutes, that's what we were talking about.
Thank you.
But she didn't have any information other than that, you gave her else you needed, and we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, and, well, when we get to the next part, we'll discuss more about it.
Okay.
So, um, while I, while I was talking to the engineer, I brought up. Schoolhouse overall. And I was, I asked him if he can give me a price to have the road engineered. For. Reconstruction of the whole road. He says, okay, he says, let me find it on the map, so. He found it on the map, G I S, and, and if you, anybody looks on the G S, G I S map for the town. Uh, the property line is. It's on the opposite side of the road. So legally, it belongs to somebody.
The road does?
Yes. Been there so long, it's, it's grandfathered into the town now. Well, it's been there for seventy years that I know of, at least, so.
You're, you're, you're right, you're right, you know, but the gallant is, is that. According to that, and they probably won't touch it until legal looks at it.
I said it's okay.
Okay, so we need a determination.
Um, yeah, I, I, I would suggest. Um, have somebody get, get in contact with legal on that.
Okay.
And, um, check that out.
Do you, so, um. I would say that it's fine with, are you guys fine if Dave reaches out to legal?
Well, yeah, we gotta do something.
Yeah, if you wanna just email, um, your question to legal.
Okay, I can do that, thank you. Um, next is, I talked to Gil Engineering. They're moving a little bit faster than they should, which is good.
This is the bridge?
Yeah, on, on Beach Hill. They've done their designs and all, well, not designs, but they've done what they could do for keeping the weight limit the way it is. They will, they will be able to bring the width of the bridge. To just about twenty-one feet wide.
Okay.
On that. I thought that was. A lot better than we have now.
What do we have now?
Probably twelve. Yeah, yeah, and it'll be done in, 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 in precast concrete going all across. It'd be tilted a little bit more of a, better approach on it.
Okay.
And so we were also discussing detours on that road. Um, he came up with an idea, and I says, that, that's not gonna work, he said, Shepherd Road, he says, no, that ain't gonna work. Um, so then I reached out to Nicole and that, and. And she didn't come back with much at all for an answer, so. My, my feeling is when it happens. They'll be, they'll be able to repair below the bridge.
No.
With the road open. But when it comes to time to do the top part of the bridge, it'll be closed between six to eight weeks.
Wow.
Right. So, um. I was, I think, think about the situation, and, um. If they, if they can try to do it during, when school's out.
Yeah.
That would be the biggest plus. Uh, we would have to reach out, well. The police department and the fire department will have to reach out to other services on the other side of Granville and Talon. And see if they were able to cover.
Yeah.
Um, emergencies over there.
Is that what they did when they were fixing the other bridge down there?
Uh, no, cause they had, they're able to do a roundabout on that road.
Okay.
Cause, because they fix one bridge first.
Okay.
And then the other bridge, they opened this up, and closed the other one, so the people can go around it.
Okay.
On that, so we couldn't get out, if we worked on standard road in Julius Hall, we couldn't go out that way.
You got a gate? We got a gate, there's a gate up there in Julius Hall.
No, 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 I, I, I said the wrong name, I'm sorry. Oh my God, my brain is fried, too much sun today.
Trying to look for you.
Just past, just past Gibb Brook, uh, left, not Gibbs. What's the one, Hyrum, what's that, Hyrum?
Hyrum.
Hyrum.
Hyrum Blair.
Yeah, but it goes through the, it always went through the standard road.
When's the last time you were out there?
I don't think so.
Oh, and when I drove out there when I was a kid, I know it went up there, you could drive a car.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I'm just saying, is that fixable?
No. It, it's, it connects.
Why not?
Standard road, but when it were, extends is on the other side of the swamp.
Oh.
And you have to put a bridge in to get back.
There's, there's not even a road there.
Well, what's the thought?
Yes, yes, exactly.
It's a river.
So the problem being then, the residents that live on the other side of that bridge and.
Are gonna have to go all the way through Granville.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And to work in emergencies.
I mean.
Tell Steve to get you a helicopter.
If you haven't, hadn't carried, you'll find the bridge.
Well, I think, you know, we're gonna have to make sure that people have enough advanced programming.
Still have, we still have time.
That we have, you know, a good time of year, that, I mean, we gotta fix the bridge.
Yeah. Yes.
Are we still talking about the bridge on Beach Hill?
Right, chill now.
Yeah. Working on TJ, and I discussed the outside here of the auditorium.
Yeah.
Last week?
Yeah.
Right, last Friday, that's right.
All the.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pathway.
Yeah.
And in fact, I, I brought you up out there this evening. And showed them what we were looking at.
And that, and that hole there we looked at?
Oh, yeah, we took the plywood off and I showed them.
Yeah, that's, that's the power.
That's power?
That's power, I, I talked to Happy yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's power.
Also, where does the culvert go from the, the drainage ditch that goes around the back of the building? Goes to that.
It goes into the basin.
To the basin area, alright, and then that basin has exalver that goes all the way down to that other cul, uh, basin?
I'm not sure, I have to look, but, I mean, when, when we, you and I were there, we, I looked, I saw, I just saw one culvert going out towards the road.
Yeah.
I didn't see another one coming in.
So are you telling me there's a hole, it's just a piece of plywood out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the truck's broken a long time ago. So that needs delivery, cause this is a playground.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and that's the main power line.
So what used to be there, cement?
No, I don't know what was.
It was some kind of a plastic cover, we bolted.
Yeah.
It was an access cover to get in the.
Is the electric company, uh?
Yeah.
But whoever took the cover off, put it up back on upside down, cause if I remember correctly, that was that dome.
Had the dome where the watershed's up.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
So. So is that a happy, can happy replace that?
Happy new, but I just assumed it's something.
Yeah, I don't really never find a cover for it. That's kinda gonna be easy.
Oh, well, I don't think, I think it's probably a state's liability for.
Plastic cover, yeah.
You want me to ask Happy about it? We, yeah, just see if he has any recommendations for, who to contact to find out. Thing that we can lock.
Well, if it's.
Talk about that side of the building, right?
Correct, yeah.
Said whatever, yeah.
If, if it's a locker. The, the power is coming in from the street, going into that manhole.
Yeah, and it comes down.
Okay.
Remember those cables we saw?
Yeah. And I touched them.
What did I? Had a hand wrapped.
Go back to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
What do we?
I, I, I'm still waiting, I'm still trying to get ahold of somebody, so I mean, I've talked, I've talked to people so far. And, uh. One of them said they'll come up and, and start training now, because they're gonna be doing projects.
So what is our priority for that, like? If this comes back as a large, I mean, do we, do we use that side of the building a lot?
Well, we were thinking, uh, when we have voting in November. Uh, the last time we had, uh. Voting in November, they came in the, the front and they went out the back, can we do, can we do that?
That's not a thing anymore, that was only during COVID. Everybody went back out the way they came in the pandemic.
Or, or you, you, you could reroute them too.
Yeah.
You know, you have to come here and back out.
I know the sidewalk is terrible, I just don't know if it's a priority for us to fix it.
It's the cover that.
Because.
Cover, I, I would say the cover would be more important now.
Yeah. I mean, the playground would be more of a priority.
Yeah.
In my mind than the sidewalk that does things. Okay.
The grants haven't submitted already. No, we're just, it's a waiting game.
Do I need to name these grants and?
The grants for Gore Road and?
Beach Hill.
Beach Hill, thank you.
So, don't, we were just talking about.
Correct.
So, got it.
Um, like I said before, line painting, eighteen miles, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um. And I did, I got some pricing to do fleet service for, for the five main trucks right now. Uh, that's twice a year, oil filter and complete loop on it was, was just under five thousand dollars for the year. Which, I don't think that was too bad.
Oh, that's, that's, that's not something that our highway guys do here?
Well, let's see, see, we can do it, but the problem is, is getting rid of the oil afterwards. You know, we've got three barrels of oil that's sitting there that's used.
So what's the price to get rid of the oil?
You gotta find somebody who wants to take it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
What does the transfer station do with the oil that we dump off there?
They have a barrel down there, but I had enough to transfer it too, or from one to the other.
Did you check with them and see if they could? If we could pay whoever they're paying to.
I can, I can, I can talk to Brett.
Yeah, double check, I wonder if that would be just less expensive than?
They already have an account set up.
Yes.
Yeah. But I'm not, I mean. If the guy would come up and do the service to vehicles, done it over with, it takes. Time away from there two guys as doing other work in the long run, you know? This is my thoughts on that. Um. I think that's it. Lots of long time.
I got two questions for you. What's going on with the bucket truck?
Still being worked on.
It's been over two months.
Well, you should have been here earlier, cause it's been away for the last six months one time.
I'm just wondering, I don't know, I.
What's happened to the bucket truck now?
Well, there was a hydraulic leak in the main boom.
Yeah.
Down, and their design of how they do the wiring wasn't the greatest. So you have the boom on top, you have the boom that goes through the bed.
Uh-huh.
All the wiring goes up into it and sits in that cupboard. So all that hydraulic was dripping on it, and dripping on it over the last. Fifteen years maybe. They call it sort of, sort of circuiting. So they had to repair each one of those lines all by hand.
How about the J C B, what's going on with that and the steering?
We had a look at twice, once already with it.
And there's no conclusion on whether to fix it or not, or what?
Well, he said that there's two sensors on it.
Okay.
Front and rear, they keep it a cr- cr- crab walk.
Crab walk.
Yeah. And, um, it works, it works, it doesn't work, most times it works.
So what's it, is it a big dollar item, is it four hundred, eight hundred?
I have no idea, he said he'd give you a price out later.
Okay, cause I think we should just, it's, it's just one that's affecting it, right?
Well, I would do both of them just in case.
Well, that's probably not a bad idea, but I'd like to see what that is and how long, because if you need that thing, it could be a savior for you, so. Okay, so I wanna know, I don't bother you anymore.
Also, oh, come, don't mind me.
For now.
Yeah, for now.
Alright, you got any questions? No? Alright, thank you, Dave. Alright, um, we have action items, Eric Kernchuk, the CPA contract renewal, so we were looking at this last week, but then we needed it just revised so that we could sign it. And I think they have, there are also quite a few things in there to be signed, and it just came in, so they're not on the agenda. Um, is the? Am I crazy, I'm seeing, yes, there. I see fire, I see.
Gotta be there. It wasn't as crazy as last week.
I'm not seeing it. I see warrant, I see a letter for historic.
That's heavy.
Revitalization grant. And then I've got another house.
Stick around, I just had a little Eric to stick around, it's the second time I didn't give it to him.
I think we.
It's not there?
It's not here, but we did approve it, so we just have to sign it.
Did we approve it?
We did.
I messed up last.
Remember, cause, um, Mark was here, and he said, go ahead and approve it, and then do that later.
Got it, alright. I'll circle this.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'll try one more time.
Um, alright, next up, motion to appoint Gordon Avery to the Emergency Management Committee for the term July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty fifty-seven. No way.
Yes.
Twenty, twenty-five, I'm thinking.
Twenty twenty-five, yes.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
That was because we realized that we did not have a water person on the emergency management.
I'm just hoping he sees the, um, agenda and flips out.
On paper?
Alright.
I, alright, have that for you guys to sign, and then we have the V I F S insurance approval, this is for the, um. Fire department. Um, hold on, I need the other thing for Gordon. Uh, insurance. So this is for, uh, the renewing the premium, uh, the expiry premium was four thousand three hundred and thirty-four, the renewal is four thousand and forty-seven dollars. And then there's a second quote, increasing the medical coverage from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, which would bring it to the annual premium to four thousand six hundred and eighty-one. Um, healthcare costs increased significantly over the past few years, it's worth considering increasing the medical limit, alright, so let's take a look at which one we have. Here. So this is specifically for fire, the volunteer fire department. So we have the two quotes, um, difference being a hundred thousand. With two hundred thousand dollars, so if we do the second quote, it would be an increase of three hundred dollars for the year. And if you do the first quote, it's a decrease of three hundred dollars for you, so I would.
I'm going with the.[1783.87]
Go with the. Okay. So motion to approve the, um, V I S, um, premium for. Four thousand six hundred and eighty one dollars, increasing the medical coverage from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So they'll just have to know, Joanne, when we send this, that we approved the higher quote. Cause it's just one signature, I'm not sure. Policy, uh, is described in quote number, oh, hold on, I think I can write the quote number.
I did, I thought I did it, put it on there.
There's a quote, you put a quote number down here at the bottom, but I don't know if that's the one for the, um. Oh, so this must be a two up here, the two six. Yeah, okay, so two six zero six five one. Okay, so that's all set. Um, now we have Jess. Nope, just one. Jess, come on down. So your husband kindly, um, volunteered you to do the, uh, inspector of animals position.
That's fine.
You're fine with that, even with new baby coming and all that, all right? All right, um, so.
But him, loud and clear. Oh, my God.
So you said you checked in all your licensing is.
It's up to date and I have emailed Ashley Kraft, so she said once, uh. The appointment letter is signed by you guys and she receives it, should be in contact with me to make sure everything is. Back up to date per se through the state regulations.
Um, and I know we're a little behind on doing the inspections, but please don't feel like you have to rush. I mean, get yourself, you know, settled and everything.
Okay.
Um. There was a line item, you and I talked about there being a line item for some expenses and it was a combined line item with, um. Uh, animal control and inspector.
I didn't think it was.
Yeah, we, Jackie, what was it?
I don't remember the note, I'm not gonna quote.
It was not much, it was like ninety dollars just to make total, but there is funny there.
I didn't think it was combined, that's why.
Don't spend it all on one.
Um, yeah, if something happens and there's some sort of radio testing that needs to be done, FedEx needs to send out packages to the state.
Yeah, so that's there, and I think, um, do we have a FedEx account?
No, no. She, you need to talk to the town clerk about this as well, cause she has paperwork.
Paperwork, okay. On down.
Okay, so first, you need to fill out this part, cause you're the new inspector.
Very good.
Um, do you know, hey, um. Can you send the information of where Joanne has to send the letter to Joanne, Ashley Kraft, you said?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Do you have it already?
No.
It might actually be, uh. I need more words, a letter.
Though she needs the appointment letter sent to.
It's the reviews coordinator, Ashley Kraft for the state. I have it in an email, so I can give you.
Thank you, guys. All right, so we have it all signed here, and then once it's signed by Jess and town clerk.
No, you.
Right?
And you.
And me, we signed it here.
Right, but I need you to sign.
And sign that one.
And it has to be on the.
Yeah, after you roll to one of my offices and I'll.
Do you have to sign that one too?
Yeah. Oh, so now. You could just sign this one right there, you accept it? She's got it.
Oh, you need me to sign?
Yeah, because we don't have one of these, so it's gonna have to.
Okay.
Do you know previously when Terry was doing it, if there was such a list of farms and farms?
I'll get you Terry's phone number.
Okay, very good.
Like real snail mail, huh?
Yeah, real snail mail, yep.
Mail a little quick, because the stamps are going until July first.
Are they really again?
Yep. No, they're not.
Wow, so you're getting, now if you have forever stamps. Four two seven nine? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what am I putting for office? Town law? Sure. You know. Attention, Jackie. Uh, town. And then here, that's it, that's all I'm signing.
That's my turn. Thank you. Okay, so you're all set?
If you guys are all.
Thank you so much, yes, all, you're, you're good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
Oh, do we not motion? Motion to appoint Jess Carrington as inspector of animals, uh, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have new business.
Appointment, I. I would like to. Just want to consider appointing, uh, Jackie Perry as, uh.
She can't be on it. She can't be on it.
So we're not doing an official point.
That's where you're wrong.
All right, hold on, let's just wanna make the motion for a discussion.
All right.
Go ahead.
I'd make a motion to appoint Jackie as temporary, uh, town administrator until.
Oh, wait, town administrator, hold on, that's a big. I don't think Jackie wants that. Jackie, do you want that?
Jackie's doing it.
Jackie's doing it.
Jackie's been doing it. Every day.
That's a big discussion. That might be something we need to have on the agenda ahead of time, so we can discuss. Cause I don't know, Jackie's interested. That's like, I thought you were talking about the building.
Well, that, that too, she, she can, as a citizen.
Absolutely.
A, 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 attend that.
Absolutely.
She can also answer questions and ask questions.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's disagreeing with that.
Okay, well, you're all ready to jump in.
No, she can't be a voting member.
She can't be a voting member, she can't be part of the discussion.
That's, that's what we came down to.
Yeah.
She's willing to do it. She's just gonna monitor bills and things like that, and I'll help with agendas and meeting minutes that aren't getting done, things like that.
Seen any.
Um. I think that. Part of the problem with that committee right now is it's not really being led by anyone, and so there's just like conversations happening over and over again. Which happens when you don't have like a person leading the meeting and directing. And so I think that that's why it's been sort of stagnant. Um.
Well, and I don't think we wanna wait. Any longer.
We don't wanna.
Burning money.
So I think Jackie would be really good at running the meeting if you guys would be in favor of letting her. Run the meeting, she's not gonna be voting, but she's gonna be, and by running, I mean.
Well, like Chris was doing, he wasn't on the committee.
Right.
He was mediating the meeting.
I just think without that happening, we're gonna keep spinning in circles.
Yeah, I have no problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you mind doing that, Jackie, just sort of like?
And I would like to just continue even when TA is in place, so we can just drive it.
Yes, let's just.
So you have a consistent person sitting or it's gonna drag out.
I think that would probably be really helpful for whoever the new TA ends up being, um, if that's a big project, we sort of discuss. Okay, um, all right, thank you, Jackie, we really appreciate that. Um. Springfield Water, I don't think Springfield Water is joining us via Zoom, so we spoke last week. Peter, Pete, do you wanna see, I'm gonna do it now that I asked and you told me Pete, I'm gonna say Peter. Pete, if you would like to come down and join us, um. We had discussed last time some questions about gates twenty and twenty one. Um, I sent your email to Nicole Springfield, Springfield Water. And she replied to me that she's back this morning, um, that she was gonna look over them and get back to us. So we may have to sort of have more discussion next week, cause I haven't heard it back from her today yet.
Do you wanna understand what?
But yeah, you can go ahead and, yeah, go ahead.
All right, the problem is Julie Saltwell, you have gate twenty here. You have this gate here.
Nineteen.
In order for us to service. That's twenty one over here, yeah, that's not the problem. Problem is, is he's getting stopped at this gate.
Okay.
All right. South Otis Road. He goes across here to go up to the cemetery, standard cemetery, all right? Now he uses his ATV to bring his stuff out.
Uh huh.
He gets stopped at the gate here by the state police. This gate does nothing. They were asked to remove it years ago. And all they did was take down enough trash past.
We asked them to remove it and they said no.
No, they didn't, they said they would take it down, they never did.
Twenty nineteen to remove the gate.
Okay.
So we decided, so we struck a compromise to take the signage down.
Okay.
And it hasn't really worked.
So that, you're trying to get to Beach Hill Cemetery, not Warfield.
Right, Warfield, you gotta go in twenty one.
Yeah, Warfield, I come in this way, yeah.
Yeah, so there was some confusion about.
The other day you brought it up, TJ, about they wanted you to go in twenty or something.
Yeah, they want us to use gate twenty.
It's much closer to going twenty one, is that what I remember?
Well, it's the only way to go in twenty one, else if you go in twenty, you gotta go through the woods.
So they were saying that, for one of these cemeteries, they were saying that it's maintained by Springfield Water. Is that not what I'm understanding? TJ said, no, we.
They don't, they don't own anything.
So the conversation I had with Nicole was the.
Once a year, once in a while, they'll go back, they'll go back there with a mower. They did that.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago. They have them back since.
Yeah.
So that's what.
Cause they just mow, they mow the trail down there and then they'll, they'll go into the cemetery and make a swoop around there and then come back down.
I think part of the confusion is that Nicole was saying at the time that. That we were, that they were allowing us to go through a certain gate, I now can't remembering if it was twenty or twenty one. That it was because there was work being done to headstones.
Right, yeah.
And that that was the reason we needed to get in there temporarily, so she's confused as to why we still need to get in there. So that's the part of the conversation we need to have with Nicole. Um, why don't you speak to her?
All right, the thing is, like I said, to go in this way here, th- these are all public ways right here, I mean. That gate shouldn't be there, I mean, you don't have to be a cemetery commissioner to get to Beach Hill Cemetery. Anybody can go to Beach Hill Cemetery.
But you have to go.
Well, the reason is, is he goes in with his ATV.
This is a public way right here, this is, this is a public way, this is a public, they should be, these two gates shouldn't be there, they're across a public way. It's Springfield Water Department on each side of the road, and they have it posted, stone wall to stone wall, but there's no signage on any of these gates.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry that.
To be honest with you, I think the only reason that they're there, so to speak, uh, not to choose the state police, get their detail. No, I'm serious, you know.
Did you see the mess I, you just read the letter that I forwarded from Nicole, that she forwarded that had come to us in twenty twenty, I think. About.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, about the gate, you read that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But like I say, that's, that. That's totally separate from this issue here.
Okay.
Number twenty nineteen.
Okay. Um.
So this issue here isn't just, yeah, it's, it's fifty fifty, it's part, partial fifty percent. Cemetery commission issue, fifty percent hall road resident issues, anybody on a hall road should be able to go back there.
Okay.
Now we're talking, the other thing too is these roads are pretty well maintained here. Uh, Springfield Water, they, 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 they brought in gravel here and this road's, if it wasn't for these gates, these roads are passable with four wheel driver, a, a truck or a car. So that, that's. It's another way in, it doesn't help us with the Beach Hill, working on the Beach Hill Road Bridge, that doesn't do us any good whatsoever.
Yeah.
But there's, there's another, uh, well, Lord Colbert, almost a bridge right here on Julius Hall Road.
Yeah.
If something happened to that, these people, that's another means of egress for them to get in and out of there.
Okay.
That's the one at the bottom there.
Yeah, right, yeah, by your, right, I, when we first, when I first moved up here back in age, we had a tree come down, power went off because there's power lines across the road. And that's how we could get out, the road was in pretty good shape, there were no gates, this is back in the early nineties.
Okay.
So like I said, I mean, it's, those gates shouldn't be there, across Blanford Public Ways, there's no signage on the gates, they serve no purpose.
Okay, and I think that that's what we had talked about possibly doing, um. Legal actions with, and what we were told, I, if I'm thinking of the right gates, was that we could probably get it moved back a couple of feet. And that was about as far as.
They gotta be taken out, there's no.
Yeah, see, I don't know if that's gonna be a possibility, but we can.
Oh, it's not a road, we just send highway.
I'm just telling you where.
I think Dave can make short work of it.
But I could be, I could be thinking of the wrong gates, cause there's lots of gates and I know that we have spoken to.
Too many gates.
Yeah. Too many gates. Um, okay, so I will, as soon as I get that, this back from Nicole, I'm gonna forward it to you and TJ, so you can take a look at it. And then, um, if we all still need to meet and talk, which I'm guessing we will, then I'll put it on the agenda and make sure that everyone knows to be there. Okay.
I got pictures, I'll save that, then we'll put Nicole.
Perfect, thank you, sorry for the, didn't all work out, that we weren't all here.
Definitely.
Thank you for coming down.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, um, George, come on down. Sneaking out of the agenda, so we can't save three minutes, huh?
When did you ever take three minutes?
Keep in mind, we don't have a TA, be kind.
All right.
So keep in mind, we don't have a TA, so be kind to us.
Okay, you, you, you wanna do with, deal with Bicentennial Park first?
Sure.
Okay. Situation is this, um. One of the. Last couple of times I was here, we were talking about cleaning up the bricks.
Mm-hmm.
And I've been over there and saw Jeff and we looked at it and. We pretty much decided, or at least I, we talked about it, in fact, that the greenery around the park. Needs some maintenance before the bricks are cleaned, um, because. I don't know one plant from another. And. Yet it's getting overgrown.
Yeah, I know, it needs to be weeded.
And we need somebody to weed it first. Um, before we do the bricks, because obviously weeding is gonna bring a lot of dirt and everything else into the ground. The other thing we should probably do is get a load of, um. Chips or wood chips or, uh, mulch to put down after it's weeded. Uh, and the question is, who knows which plants and who can take responsibility for taking the weeds out? I'd be willing to go down and get a load of mulch and bring it up, if we could get two or three people to help put the mulch down where it's needed. Under the direction of somebody who knows what they're doing about the plants. But I don't wanna take responsibility for ruining the good plants that are there.
I don't know, I'd have to look at it, I mean, it seems kinda obvious that there's like some sort of grass growing that needs to be pulled.
That's all, that's, I pulled it all out down below on the stone wall section, I did that the other day, but. I don't know what, they planted that stuff. I don't know if it was for soil erosion or something.
Did they?
Yeah. Only cause I could stand there watching when it did it, but, um, a lot of the weeds are pretty, you could tell what they got, there's some that are. I wouldn't know either, George, I mean.
Now, I had, thanks to Mary, um, Dave Lovejoy's name was mentioned to me as a person who knows one plant from another.
Yeah.
And I was, I haven't approached him, um, because I don't know. What the pleasure of the site board would be about.
Yeah, if you wanna give them a call and. And we can identify what we should pull and shouldn't pull, I couldn't. Think we could probably gather a few people to help.
Then we could have a, you know, Saturday cleanup at the thing and.
Yeah.
Get it done.
Well, all right, I will call Dave.
Just maybe take some pictures and, um, you can even email him to Dave if he can't go up there. Maybe take some pictures and, um, you can even email him to Dave if he can't go up there.
He's there every day.
He's there every day, yeah.
He's where every day.
And he walks over to the post office every day.
Oh, he does. Can you, can you butt home?
Well, I won't see him now because I said something, but if I said, can't see him, I'll catch him and tell him to expect a phone call from him.
Okay.
And maybe he can point him out to me, I don't know.
Yeah, as long, as long as, you know, I, I just would hate to take something that accounts but good money for and, and, and take it out. Now, in terms of cleaning the brick, there's a company called Eco Cleaning that I have used for some work at my house. And I asked the guy who, uh, if he does pressure washing. And I asked him to stop by on his way home after we left our place to give it, they'd take a look at the brickwork and what it cost to have the bricks cleaned. And he quoted me three hundred and twenty-five dollars to clean now. The question would be access to water, um.
There's, there's a hose at the post office.
There is?
Yeah, it was like on the side, there's a spigot on this side, I believe.
Uh, nothing on the side of my house, there's nothing in the front.
It's on this side, I think.
On the Russell Road side?
Yeah, uh, okay, I'll, I'll double check because I didn't.
Because we had her watering plants there and she was using them.
Why don't you use my hose?
Does she?
Yes.
We can double check, I, I thought it was.
Anyway, we can, I can also check inside to see if there's, uh, a hose up, so we can run a hose out.
Yeah.
From somewhere, but, um, you know, the question is, do you want me to go ahead and arrange a time after the cleaning of the plants and so forth is done, because we'll probably have to, you know, schedule it for late July or so.
Sure, that's, that's good.
Alright.
Make sure you get the bill to me, please.
Get you the bill?
Give me the bill, yeah.
Alright, oh, thank you. Alright, um, that's pretty much where we are with Bicentennial Park in terms of getting things done. So somehow, I would like to see some official inclusion of Bicentennial Park in the Blanford Park system. So that monies can be appropriated from the town and budgeted.
I don't know what, where it landed. He was trying to get this all set up so that we couldn't start to receive or spend money in a different way. I can't remember exactly what it was, it was like, do you remember something about the parks?
He didn't share those things with me.
Because, I mean, it should be treated the same way that cemeteries are and everything else in terms of funding for maintenance and care. Okay, um, moving along to the post office project, um, this is, this turned out to be a lot more interesting than I ever thought it would be. Um, I approached the Westfield Gas and Electric, um, to see if they'd be interested in funding, um, some of the costs for the materials and so forth. And they, I originally asked them for seven hundred and fifty dollars and I got a very nice call back from a, a student, um, assistant there who is a, is apparently in charge of responding to people who request funds. And he explained to me that they have a five hundred dollar limit that they fund. And I should just change my letter to five hundred dollars instead of seven hundred and fifty, which I did do and get back to him on and so forth. So he's in the process of processing that letter. Uh, he's very optimistic that we will be funded at the five hundred dollar level.
Can you get that check to me when you get it, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you get that check to me when you get it and I'll.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because it will be made after the town. Um, the, the thing, the, what they're asking the town for in terms of responses to include their name and logo in the, in the event somewhere, make a banner or some way so that they get publicity, um, at the time of the event. And so that they appropriately are thanked publicly for the, for the donation they're making to, uh, to the project. And so I'm gonna be in touch with him and make sure everything falls in place there. The second, uh, contact I made was to Bill Hull at Hull Forest Lands. And Bill responded, uh, very warmly and sent a check for a hundred dollars made out to the town, which I have here. And, uh, he also sent some brochures about what Hull is doing and I don't know whether, I didn't realize how extensive their operation was and, and what they're doing and so forth, but I have a couple of brochures and so forth about what they're doing. And, and they did, um, Bill got the, uh, Leopold Conservation Award in two thousand and nineteen for their management of their forest lands. And, uh, I thought it might be good to just put these in the library so that the library has them and people are interested in what they're doing. Uh, they're very interested in opening their lands to your, to use uh, by the public for hiking and, and passive recreation as well as hunting in the fall. And, uh, it's, it's sort of contrasted what Springfield Waters does. Uh, they're sort of welcoming good use of the land and proper use of land as compared to stay out, don't come in kind of attitude. So I think from, uh, my contact with him randomly over the past couple of years, he would be a good person. Um, that the recreation people in town might include in terms of seeing what make, could be used of his land for community activities and so forth. So that's, that took place there. Uh, the third contact I made was with Colton Kenna. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing his name right. He's the manager of Home Depot. Um, I wasn't aware that in the last year or so, Home Depot changed their po- philosophy about making donations. And I worked back with him last week and he explained that Home Depot now does not, does not choose to just make cash or product donations. They want to get their employees involved in community activities. So they were very, I asked for them pictures of the post office building and so forth. And they said, you know, what they are, would do would be to have a team, qualified team, come up and look at the building, assess how much paint was needed, how much repairs were needed, how much, uh, fixing up needed to be done to the ex- exterior, come up with an amount. And they would probably be able to donate that amount of money in terms of materials. They also would hinge it on their employees participating as volunteers, do the work.
Right.
And then, and to partner with our volunteers to do the work. They see it as a partnership between the charity of the town and the Home Depot. Um, and he was very, his philosophy is, is I, is very interesting in terms of how much they depend and they count on their employees getting involved. And that really is critical, because he said, if we have no employees, they'll do it, we can't fund you. And that's how firm he was about it. So, you know, I'm trying to work things out with him to do that. Um, he said there's, there's two documents he needs. I'm not familiar, well, I'm familiar with one of them. The, the one is he needs a document from the town that shows that we have insurance for volunteers doing work.
Jackie, were you able to get that?
I reached out to the insurance team to get a copy of, uh, it's a liability insurance, right? I don't know, but I, the other, so I can get you that.
Okay.
If you'll be able to give me a copy.
Can you, how soon can you get that to me?
I hope this week I will be able to.
Okay, because I told him I'd get it to him by Wednesday.
And I said to you, don't be making any promises, don't have a TA.
That's, only because they're under, they're under a cycle.
Sure.
And if we don't move on, and we're talking about August, that's not, you know, kind of thing.
For the insurance, I hope to send you a copy. Just I went through all the papers. I was able to find our insurance of the building, but not liability insurance.
Okay.
So I just need to get that for, um, so I've already got a call out to them to get that.
Okay, would, if you can, can you get them to email it over to you and then call me and I'll come pick it up and, and carry it down? Now, I don't wanna miss this cycle, because, you know, with them.
I'm pushing.
Okay, which raises my question about volunteers covered in general in town. You know, for instance, if we have volunteers working in Bicentennial Park or, you know, like spreading the mulch and doing this, doing that, do we have the coverage for it?
I'm sure we do. I mean, it's no different if somebody just walked into the park contributing and fell.
Well, that, that may be different than volunteer.
I don't think so.
Businesses like that, right, will have the employees sign an indemnification letter that basically says that they will not hold us liable should someone get hurt. So, these guys come over from Home Depot, they're up on a ladder, somebody falls off, you don't want anybody suing us, even if we have liability insurance. Right, they should identify us that we will not be liable. And that's generally at a corporate level, that's standard. You know, if you go work for, um, Habitat for Humanity or, uh, Merrick Cares or something like that, the employees just signs a thing that says, you know, they're not gonna go after that place.
But I'm, I'm thinking volunteers in general. Anyone, you know, if somebody cooking hamburgers, it, 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 the thing burns himself.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have some type of insurance in town to cover that kind of volunteerism. Whether it's somebody make, doing something for the council on aging or somebody picking up trash or somebody, you know, sorting something.
Yeah, I don't know what the town's like on the insurance is.
Katie, go ahead.
Unless, unless things have changed, um, I was assured by several people at Colton and Page years ago that, that very thing, if Blanford residents are working on Blanford property in a volunteer capacity, that they would be covered. And I don't know that, I, I would probably agree with you, Jackie, that the Home Depot people might want it, we might wanna have them sign.
Yeah.
But I think it's included in the Amaya, uh, insurance for the town, because so many of us are volunteers.
Yeah, I can check, I, I could definitely.
We definitely need something. Yeah, I think we need something on the paper, you know.
Now, that would be easy one, uh, this place, this, this IRS determiner that you need. Um, those that I've reached out to said, you know, we don't have that in a municipality, that's, that would be going back to the postal. They leased that building, so, and I'm like, okay, well, I'm not, I, I need a little bit more information on what that letter actually is.
Okay.
Do you know?
Do you know? What an IRS determiner is?
That's what he said to me, an IRS determiner. I, I, I would assume my town accountant would know exactly what that is.
I asked the accountant.
They have no idea.
Maybe it's not for municipalities, maybe that's more for private.
I'm not sure. Or maybe if we could get, uh, go ahead, Mary, do you know?
We, the insurance covers the volunteer firefighters. Shouldn't it, is that, can we make that all encompassing? Is it all encompassing?
I think we already, yeah, does it work?
When I took over the gym and started letting, allowing people to use the gym, I asked those questions of Christopher. And yes, we have insurance. If somebody gets hurt playing ball in the gym, we have insurance to cover it.
We need to see it written, though, we can't just assume that it's there. We, I need a copy of the policy.
I'll, I'll take it, I'll take it as you do, so, because I'm already talking to them to get this information. So all the take is to do, to get something in writing.
So, at this point, if I go back to Home Depot and talk to Colton and say, there is no such thing as an IRS determination letter for the town, I will be accurate?
I, as far as I know, that's what I'm being told.
An IRS determination letter is for nonprofits.
Only, I didn't know whether it covered the town or not.
No, town is municipality, so you're attacking them no matter what.
Okay, alright.
So if, if they need something from the town that says you're a municipality, this is our building, we're working on, then that should suffice.
Okay.
So all they would need is our tax exempt number?
Yeah. Do you have a copy of that?
Alright, so we're gonna say, get that from me also with the other paperwork and I will go hand carry it to him.
Alright, thank you, George.
Alright, now, the only other thing that we're looking at is possibly a couple other sources of funding that may come in and I don't, can't talk about it at this point, because we haven't had a, a firm contact with them and, and haven't had any response, so we may pick up a couple hundred dollars more.
I wanna thank you for your effort. It's really nice. And you did a nice job on repairing that other, uh, bench.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, George.
Alright, uh, next up, we have Westman Sampson and City Point Partner invoices for Fire and Highway. So, we'll just move your recorders here. So, Joanne went through and we have the invoices for Westman Sampson. The question has been, um, are the deliverables, have the deliverables been delivered? And what was our contract? I know you're working on that, Jackie, any progress?
Yeah, well, a couple things. Now that I'm.
You feel free to come down too.
Okay, a couple things now that I'm working with that team. So I've already reached out to Adam. Adam and I are gonna get together and just go through what's been done already. Okay, so at least I get some sense of where they're at and then get with the team and say.
Well, you're firmer than I am, because I've been out for two years and never seen one stick of paper from them.
From who?
From Weston and Sampson.
We got bills, we got paper.
Like I'm saying, I wouldn't pay their bill, I'd like to buy.
Keep in mind that Adam hasn't been to all these meetings. You should talk to Jeff, you should talk to Paul, they've been at every meeting.
Yeah, but, um, the only reason why I wanted to sit with Jeff is Jeff wants to kinda take on.
Adam.
Or Adam wants to take on project lead and get his perspective and then get the team rolling, right? Where we're having meetings every, I'd like to have meetings every week, frankly.
Not necessary. You won't get nothing from them? They don't send things for months, how are you gonna get anything?
Well, at least to get things rolling.
For the bills, right?
You know, what we don't wanna do is get billed for work that's not done.
I mean, I know you've seen a lot of digital, um, projects that they've put together, because I've come into meetings and they've been presenting.
There was nothing we wanted size wise. They were, they were supposed to give us some rough blueprints so that we could bring them to the town with an estimated cost.
Yeah, but didn't you guys just decide on a location like?
We did it two months ago.
Yeah.
Two months ago.
So, wouldn't city planners as the O P M, would they be in charge, so City Point is the project manager? Shouldn't they be in charge of tracking our deliverables?
Absolutely should be.
So why are we paying them then, like?
Well, we are paying them and we're paying the other guys too, so that's what I'm trying to dig into.
Thank you.
To make sure that, that, you know, City Point should be coming to the table with the team and saying, here's where we are.
Yeah.
Period.
I feel like, yeah, okay.
Um, I'm, and we've been in a contract with City Point since what I found was twenty twenty one.
Yeah, I've got bills going way back then.
Yeah, so.
At least six a year.
Right, so I, until we, you know, he had appointed me to help. I, you know, I didn't wanna reach out to anybody, so now I, I will reach out to City Point and say, okay, guys, this is what we're gonna need to do.
Okay.
Get in here and, you know, because we really should not be going directly to the vendor. If you've got a project manager managing the vendor.
Yeah.
What they, every meeting, they're, both of them are here.
Are they?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
So you kinda wonder.
I stepped in and I'm like, this doesn't make sense to me. I mean, you're hiring this guy to do it, but I'm, I don't know all the municipality stuff sometimes. So I, I kind of thought it, but I didn't know where to go with it, I guess, so.
Well, and that's why regardless that the TA, you know, once the TA has announced this stuff, obviously they should also join. But I'm just gonna stay on, because that way we can see it to the, have one constant moderator, basically, facilitator.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, so that's, we're, we're not paying anything until we know.
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then we have a resolution in support of the construction of Mass Pike Interchange Exit. Alright, where is that? Minutes, I got appointment letters. She took F Y I, George took the other appointment letter for, um. But I know that you're gonna go looking for it. Um.
So, uh.
I'm not seeing that. So, um, Chips, do you wanna come down? I've got a letter for you, um, for the uh, application for the Paul Brown Historic Revitalization Grant. Right, is that what you're looking for? Okay, so I have it on letterhead, like you requested. I think everything is in it. This is for the, um, uh, group, by the way, church, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
We're one of sixteen, uh, applicants going for uh, a split up of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the minimum of a grant is fifty thousand and maximum a hundred thousand. So you can see what the odds are in terms of, perhaps, uh, being able to come through.
And how much do we need?
We look about seventy thousand.
Seventy?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds reasonable. Do you, Joanne, do you need to keep a copy of this or can I just give the original to Chips, the letter?
I think I should.
I'll make a copy right now, no, no. Okay. Yeah, oh, we have a copy right there. Let me just sign both of them. Alright, here you go. You're welcome. Um, Joanne, I didn't see anything for the Mass Pike Interchange Exit. Was that the thing that, um, is that the same thing right there? We were talking about?
Yeah, that's just.
So this is a resolution in support of construction of an interchange exit on I ninety. Oh, this is the one from the.
From the kids, yeah.
From the kids.
Sorry, I didn't give you a, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, so I had just been in contact with Mr. Mosher, who is the, um, teacher over there. Let me see if I can pull it up. And he was asking if we could hold on to it for the fall. Um, so he said, he's an eighth grade civics teacher at Gateway. His students have brought this to us. Um, and they want, they were devoting their energy to advocating for the, this exit, um. Students would love to see the question add to the ballot, but unfortunately at this point, our year is running down. I was wondering if we would consider trying to have the referendum question added onto the fall ballot, though my students would be in the ninth grade at that point. Um, so I told them we were holding on to it anyways and that we are going to possibly, wanted to do the informational meeting first.
Yes, Mary, Mary, excuse me, I didn't mean to, you gotta shorten this up for two for the ballot, right? You said it's way, way, way too long, so.
So I was gonna kick it back to them to shorten it up. To shorten it up.
Okay, now, if you wanna put this on the ballot question for the town of Blanford. You're gonna have to have a special election.
Yeah, that we talked about, meeting a special election anyways within the next like three months. There was something else for. Highway. The tire, when we have one for fire, what talking about. Setting up the possible salary or. Stipend for fire, something for the building possibly, and then this. So that's a big meeting that sounds like I'm gonna need some Xanax before. Um, so that was, but before that, we have to do the um informational meeting.
Yes.
So there's no date right now. That's not like we like when you think of all the TA stuff.
Yeah, bear in mind, we have a presidential primary in September, right after the fair.
Presidential primary in September, okay.
Please.
This won't be on that ballot. I don't think we'll.
I can't go on it, though.
Oh, oh, because of, okay. Okay, yes, Katie.
Is there a reason why there were weird resolution in supporting this when five years ago the state did that diet study? And the townspeople said, we do not want an exit. There were historical issues, conservation issues, and so on. Yes, Joanne?
That was non-binding. That was all I was gonna say. The vote was non-binding, and a lot of the people here were from Beckett.
Right, right, but I mean, it doesn't just affect Blanford, obviously, but I just, I just.
I think there's a desire to have an official vote in Blanford that's actually just one of Blanford residents, so that vote was. People that had just attended the meeting. I don't think it was expected and, um.
Right, and the study wasn't asking for a vote. They just wanted to present stuff to the state. So you are saying that there's going to be an informational meeting.
Correct.
Long before we vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And and this is has been proposed by the students to be a non-binding referendum question.
Yeah.
And I think that's very important to indicate because when you looked at the agenda, it said, you know, resolution to have a. To support a term park exit. It's sort of like, where did this come from? So, thank you. That's helpful to have that information.
Started off with the student projects, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, um, the other thing I have is a community development block grant. Um, this is the, these are the housing rehab things we're always looking at. So this is, um, it says. Uh, that we, the town Blanford's receipt of the report compiled following the, this is a lot of letters, EO HLC. Monitoring in the um fiscal year twenty twenty. Um, conducted by Shelley Chauvelier and Christine Getrue. Uh, following services responses to all corrective action items listed throughout the monitoring report. So you've got the housing rehab program finding one. Uh, slow program implementation. These are just the extensions that we. Official commence in early June. Based on correspondence with the contractor, the contractor has been notified at the end of fiscal year and wasting deadline and will waste all accordingly. It is anticipated that construction of final payments will be completed before the end of September. And that means we have another one. In here. Uh. No, it was, was there another one in here or was that it?
This is ten Russell Stage Road.
Oh, yeah, there was one. Yeah, that one. So the. Community development. Um, the same thing, building, yada, yada. Um, so this is for ten Russell Stage Road. These are the improvements which are funded by deferred payment loan. With the owner of the property. So it's amended project amount for sixty thousand two hundred dollars. This is just. Through the owner. We don't have anything to do. With this. It's the loan through the program that comes through us. Um. So, yeah, this is just an amendment to their price.
It was just for you.
Yeah, so the owners have signed it, will sign it here. I think that's it. I think we got everything, Joanne.
Yeah, except Eric. I'm sure he'll have to wait.
Except for Eric. Sorry. All right.
Real hard this time.
Um, so motion to go into executive session. Yeah, um, in accordance with GLC thirty A, section twenty-one, A two, discuss strategy sessions and cooperation for negotiations with union personnel. We're in the collective bargaining sessions. Here it says, yes.
No. Yes.
Maybe no.
No.
Too late.
We're gonna ask Anna tomorrow.
Yeah.